Is addressed in both and not in the same manner. And in fact, the range of possibilities before us ranges from the status quo to increasing lot size requirements to decreasing lot requirements. And not all of those possibilities were reflected in the ad. So to me, the question is, you know, what, if anything, among this sort of complete set of edits is properly before us tonight and noticed for the purposes of the hearing? And more specifically, you know, in the interest of progress, can we kind of work on this in a piecemeal fashion? I think there's plenty here for us to work on with respect to the questions about special permit versus special exception, some of the other changes that are reflected in the request from the supervisors with respect to changes in the ordinance that are not in any way at play, if you will, in my amendments. But those that are, I think, are really the question. Can we, it seems to me that we really need to address those issues in their entirety, and whether we could do that tonight or not. If only part of the policy range of options has been noticed, it is confusing to me. So I'm not sure if I've helped in any way to keep this up, but that's the situation.
If I may, may I ask you, maybe you can just shift the stage a little bit.
Okay. The Board of Supervisors originated the set that was in that resolution. And they passed the resolution and directed me and Mr. Damrin to do certain things regarding advertising and also requested that this body also hold a public hearing, which is required by the code. So the only things that you could, that are properly noticed for tonight are those that were in the resolution that the Board of Supervisors passed. The May amendments, as you've referred to them, you know, just so we can talk about them collectively, are not part of what you can act on this evening because they have not been advertised. So the only thing that the Board could act on, sorry, the Commission can act on tonight would be the set that is contained in the resolution passed by the Board Supervisors, which Mr. Chairman has in his hand there. The others, there are going to have to be the subject of a public hearing. And the Board is going to have to pass a resolution with the quote "magic language" in it that refers it back to you all for public hearings, which can be easily done. That's going to require the Board to direct us to do that.
That's it. So thank you for that, if I may. So it seems to me that that's perfectly fine for 85% of the way through here, but it's the other 15% that may be an issue or whatever, the small map that is somewhat in conflict, that may be in conflict. It seems to me it would be ill-advised of us to, you know, try to treat that and then revisit it again when we get to the other sections. So I guess my, and I'm not sure how this plays into it, but I'm perfectly comfortable if we can legally and technically and together agree to go through the other provisions, but it seems to me it would be ill-advised to take on provisions that are in conflict with other provisions that we'll be taking on again potentially at our next meeting.
Could you, could you be more specific about which ones are in conflict?
The, the reference to the acreage requirements, you know, there's the, I believe, I don't have the language at my fingertips at the moment, maybe my colleagues can talk on this, but the, I believe that the, you know, in part of the May seven edits would have raised the minimum lot size requirements over the status quo, and what's reflected in the proposed edits by the Supervisors would lower, if I'm not mistaken, or possibly eliminate the acreage requirements. So it seems to me that we either take on the lot size requirements in total, or we have this weird situation where we're talking about one set of possible changes this month and a different set of possible changes in the future.
Sure. Let me, let me point out that paragraph five of the ad reads as follows. "In addition, the proposed amendments will affect Section 170-66K in that the proposals change or eliminate the minimum acreage lot sizes for bed and breakfast establishments, tourist homes, and boarding houses in CNA zones." So the intent of me as the drafter of that language was to bracket the realm of possibilities that could be considered by this Commission and ultimately by the Board of Supervisors because we don't know what's going to come out of the other end of the legislative sausage machine.
Got you.
Because there are multiple proposals. I think Mr. Parrish has a proposal to eliminate the minimum lot sizes for B&Bs. This, this Commission recommended 10 and 20 acres respectively, and then added some language regarding whether or not that could be waived if it was on a public road. So the Code of Virginia requires and the case law requires that there be a descriptive summary of what is being proposed. Obviously, if you don't have consensus either in the Commission or the Board as of yet because you haven't had a public hearing and heard what everybody's got to say about these ideas, both at this level and at the Board level, it's, you're going to have to bracket it and sort of say, and the idea is you put the reading public on notice is to say, my property rights may be affected. So Mr. Damrin and I carefully chose the words, change it, well, that's, that could be anything. Could be 100 acres, could be eliminated altogether. So it's my legal opinion to this Commission and to the Board, who's ultimately my client, that the bracket is broad enough to give the descriptive summary. You don't have to be a lawyer to know that, hey, they're going to do something about bed and breakfasts and boarding houses and how many minimum acres you've got to have. And therefore, I better show up and be heard. That's, that's the point about that. So as far as overlap, I mean, this Board could still report, this Commission could still report to the Board, you know, we stand by what we said before, you know, 10 acres, 20 acres, whatever you're going to, whatever the consensus of this, this Commission is to the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, it's going to be their legislation that they, that they decide. But I believe it is properly advertised and it is a sufficiently descriptive summary of what's, the kind of action you're going to take.
Thank you. That helps a lot and it clarifies my understanding. So because the ordinance touches on that part and because the way the notice is written, the range of policy options is whatever it stands up being, we can discuss it. That's what I'm going to interpret from that. I'm not aware of, that's the one that seemed to me to be in, you know, where I thought there was a real direct connection. Others have, but that satisfies me, that we should continue and, sorry to take the time to do it, but I would propose that we can proceed with the agenda as it is, based on my concerns.
Any other discussion comments? I think one of the, I think the, the question is, is do we feel comfortable moving forward? Should this be a discussion or should it be opened up in a public hearing, which kicks in a different set of rules on where this is ultimately going to go? If it's a discussion and us trying to get our hands wrapped around what the effects of this, of these changes are, should be a discussion. I oppose that. And I say that, that we're in a really sensitive time, as I see it, and I'm fairly open about this with regards to a change. You know, we just learned, Mr. Damrin is, you know, we want to figure out better things and we should best lock, we'll have a new person coming in. The interim County Administrator will have somewhere ultimately taking that, that position and say, well, that really doesn't have anything to do with business and we need to move that on. I may agree with that to some degree, but I do believe that there's, there's a flux here and with government now here changing. We've seen a lot of that over the last year and I think it's been an obstacle for us. I know it's been an obstacle. It's been pretty daggone frustrating sometimes if you try to dig through that. I wouldn't want this significant change to be, to become a frustrating issue and not have a proper discussion, but I would, I would accept some of that.
I think the total, the total package here, I mean, I know all the changes are referenced in BDA viewpoints, but I believe the total number of pages that's been submitted to us is like 190 pages.
Are you talking about the, the strike through track?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, most of those pages don't have any strike throughs on them. There's just a select few and that's why they're highlighted and then stricken through to show what language would be removed. And a lot of this is merely repetitive, you know, where it says special use permit or it says BZA, and then there's a comma, so forth. It's just simply taking those where the, where that's mentioned in the code and pulling it out and substituting special exception and planning commission or Board of Supervisors as the case may be. So a lot of it, even though this, we've reprinted the entire zoning ordinance as far as, as far as the strike through, the strike throughs only occur on certain pages. It's not like every page is, is in the case.
I guess, I guess between 190 pages and the issue of site sizes variation here with the tourist homes and bed and breakfasts, I don't know what is expected of the planning commission by the Board Supervisors, whether they're expecting us to turn something around tonight, whether they can have something to really reflect upon and move forward in November, or whether this is just a start point. But as Mr. Suttlefield, I have an influx here, the administration above us here that has always participated in the planning commission between the county administrator and the zoning administrator. And I'm in the opinion that if we move forward tonight, we need to move forward slowly and maybe continue the public hearing into additional months so that the public can be informed to ensure that tonight issues will come up, that will be given out to the public through the media and more people will become informed and have opinions as this thing is developed. And so maybe this will be something that if we have a hearing tonight, we shouldn't pass it, but to simply table it, continue the hearing until another month or two, we get a different effort. But I can't recall in time in my 16 years where even though it may be just a common page where the, where it's been so many documents, 190 pages of those changes that we have addressed and being only basically available online form where not everybody is online will have the ability to go review it, formulate their opinion, I think we need to go slow.
I don't want to, yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I thank you, Al, for that. I totally agree. I guess the flip side of it is to the extent that, you know, so many people came tonight with something to say about this, I would certainly like to hear from them. And, you know, I think while, you know, there are some other provisions in here about process and about eliminating certain sections, there are some things in here that I think are worthy of discussion and frankly, I have opinions about that go beyond the special permit versus special exception, not the case. And so it seems to me we could sort of talk about the special permit versus special exception piece in its entirety rather than get into the, did they catch every one of them or not, although we could get into that. It seems to me that we should talk about that issue in its entirety and, you know, what are the range of inputs on that, whether it's even something, you know, the Commission has a responsibility on. And then there's sort of the individual, the additional changes that I would suggest that we talk through rather than try to go kind of page by page. We'd suggest if we proceed, which I am in favor of, that we kind of do it topic by topic when we get to the discussion here. Of course, the public, if we open it up, should be, feel free to comment on anything they, they care to, but that's how I would suggest that we approach it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with, I believe it was your comment, that it's good to show progress. I think we're assembled here as a body and the public is here. Those are, those are certainly have shown an interest in these topics. I recognize many faces in this evening. So I think it would be a lost opportunity to just table it and push it down the road for another 30 days. With respect to the transition in government, we're almost going to have that transition. We may just be chasing our tail on that. It may not be into the county administrator in place until after the first of the year or right around the first of the year, but that's a, that's a couple of months from now. So that's always going to be something that may be, may be a dynamic. So that doesn't convince me to necessarily wait, fully assemble here. I think what we, what I've heard in the way of what we should take on, I, I concur with that. I also agree that we should be deliberate, not feel that we have to push all of this through certainly this evening or even next month, but do show good faith in, in progress. However, we'd maybe would like to move forward with that, but I think just to simply say, let's let everybody else look at this for another 30 days. I think if we're ready to discuss this, it's a lost opportunity.
Your point's well taken and there's a lot of good points. I guess the, the question is, is that, you know, clarify my comments, I didn't suggest just to push this to next month when we all are in the hall tonight. I think it's important we have a discussion, but is this opening it up to public comment? I think it's important to hear the comments to the folks that are here tonight who come out and who may provide some value to our discussion, but as far as saying this is a public hearing. I'm looking at this very, from a technical standpoint, if Mr. Black, maybe you can help me if we open this up to a public comment, get some feedback. Can we have some discussion about some of these particular points in the resolution, whether it's the acreage, you know, where you feel comfortable with? I think that's productive. But to have a public hearing and try to come to some conclusion by the end of the night, that's where I think we need to use caution and where it may be, Mr. Henry's, the way as we, we table it and continue that discussion if we see it in the light. I don't want to, what I caution the Commission on is is to, is to, if we move forward and we say it's a public hearing and we give the appearance that we're going to come out here tonight and so kind of finalize this. Personally, I don't, I'd like to hear some discussion about it. Maybe that's ultimately what's up, I don't know, but it's worthy to be very strong and deliberate. This is a big, this is a big deal.
So if I may, I'm sorry to belabor this, but it seems to me that there's two separate questions. There's do we open up a public hearing and/or take public comment tonight and in the future? And when do we reach a point where we have to come to closure? I think those are pretty independent of one another. Obviously, we hear from the public before we come to closure, but having a public hearing tonight, I wouldn't imagine that anybody should presume that that means that we are necessarily going to act on this tonight, as it never should. So, so I, you know, I, I think what we should be doing is starting the input regardless of the output and, you know, I'm not sure how, whether that's a, you know, there's a technicality, we should have public comment and not open a public hearing. This is where I think it gets back to kind of a legal procedural question, you know, can we have a public hearing, temporarily end it, have a discussion, and then continue it at our next meeting? I mean, these are sort of logistical, technical questions. I think that's what we should do. Sounds like there's consensus and that's what we should do. It's just a question of how we do it and stay in line with the proper procedure.
You can open it and have a public hearing. You can, that doesn't force you to act on it. Now, if you're going to continue the public hearing, that's a little nicer point, in the way where you're going to have another public hearing next meeting, is that if that's your intention, if that's what you all want to do, something different you have to do than if you say, okay, we had a public hearing, now we're going to deliberate and not act tonight. So that's what I think the Commissioners need to decide, is whether or not tonight is the public hearing, which has been properly advertised in my view. And you can have the public hearing and close it and deliberate, or there's two ways to do it. You can announce the continuance of the public hearing, but I would recommend for the sake of giving the proper notice to people that you're going to have to re-advertise for the next meeting. Okay, then, I mean, if you're, if that's what you're worried about, fairness and getting the, the word out that, hey, come back, we're going to hear you again, then I would recommend that, that there be re-advertising before that happens.
Mr. Chairman, isn't it also, is there also a conversation here about what was advertised and what wasn't, you know, clearly the public hearing is advertised for the proposed zoning amendments, but not necessarily for, although, you know, for these potential, the list that the.
The May amendments.
The May amendments.
Resilience amendments versus.
Right, right. And I know, believe the public had a chance to weigh in on all of these as the planning commission was going through, because most of this was not committed down on our own commission, but just for a point of clarity, if we move forward, is it probably moving forward just on the zoning amendments or are we moving forward on, including the May amendments or one or the other? I'd just like a little clarity on that. I guess it relates to what's advertised and what we can, you know, can, cannot discuss, should, should not discuss.
First of all, we were in the unit just yesterday, I thought, you weren't legally, you know, we discussed that. We mostly had that.
It's my opinion that you can't discuss the May amendments because they haven't been advertised. I mean, there's a little bit of overlap.
Right.
And in fact, there's some overlap, and the only overlap I'm really aware of is in that 66K stuff, the minimum lot size, you know, that is, like I said, bracketed. I'd stay away from the other stuff because there, it hasn't been advertised and the Board hasn't adopted a resolution with the magic language in it that would hit that ball rolling. I mean, and the case law says it's just a dead letter. It's no good unless you've got magic language in the resolution. So what, what I think you're, you're procedurally in line to do this evening is to open it up for a public hearing on what has been advertised, and that is what the Board Supervisors resolved and its Board of Supervisors originated, proposed amendments, and only those things. The May amendment would require another advertisement as properly done, properly spaced out in time in order to consider those things. And that would have to, I think, come from the Board of Supervisors in a resolution. You all have reported to them, now they're going to send it back to the planning commission for public hearing, and it's got to go back to them for public hearing. So what, what your, the bottom line is, remind you, what's been advertised and what can be considered tonight as a public hearing are only those things that are in the resolution passed by the Board of Supervisors already. I guess you said the September meeting.
Is that this resolution here, Mr. Gold?
That's that one. That's the one with all the tedious comments and and or issues.
That's also reflected in the, in the markups. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, your question. Yes. So, Mr. Gold, if we have a public hearing tonight and hear public comment, can we then close the public comment for continuation next month? Vote on that, and then after the vote, if it's affirmative that we continue public comment next month, can the Board at that time have some general discussion about what we've just heard and about questions within the Board itself?
Are you, you talking about public comment or a public hearing?
Oh, I guess we're going to have a public hearing tonight, maybe. If we have a public hearing tonight, can we agree after we hear comments for the length of time, agree to close comment and continue it next month? And after that, have some general discussion with the Board on comments and questions and clarification with you of the questions, and then next month advertise and continue the public.
Well, if you, if you want to continue the public hearing, like I said, and not close it tonight, if that's what you want to do, you got, you got two choices there. One, you can close it tonight, but that still doesn't prevent you from having a public comment at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay. But the public comment's not going to, it might be have to be advertised. Technically, you probably wouldn't have to, you could keep the public hearing open, but I don't advise you do that. If you close it tonight, and then if you're going to have another public hearing, which, I'm not sure what difference it really makes, you know, it's, then I would suggest a re-advertising.
What I'm, what I'm asking, public hearing tonight, public hearing next month, we continue the public hearing after we hear comments tonight, and after we close the public comment for tonight, it would understand to be additional public comment next month, can we then have some general discussion with the Board tonight?
Okay. The answer, yes, to the bottom of the park, yes, you can certainly, you don't have to act on it.
Right.
You can talk.
Make sure.
Yeah. You certainly can.
Okay. We'll make sure.
You have a question, Mr. Gold, finally, still on the second item we're adopting in the agenda, Mr. Gold.
I move that we adopt the agenda with the clarifying understanding that item E1 reflects those changes to the ordinance that are, have been noticed and are related to Supervisor's resolution. It's not really a change, it's just a clarification to the item, maybe clear what we're dealing with.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda with these understandings. Your second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
And for a discussion? We'll adopt the agenda as is, considering the legal, the, the, the.
Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Very helpful to have you here. Next item on the agenda of the minutes from the September 20th, we had those pushed you to forward review, any changes to nations, or that's, there being a motion to accept the minutes of the September 20th meeting. Senator, Mr. Brown, I have seven. The next item on the agenda is public comment. As you have heard tonight and seen the agenda, we have one item on the agenda, and that is what we just previously talked about, that being the resolution by the Board of Supervisors, that will be for us. This is a general public comment session. We're going to open up a public hearing, public hearing for that particular item. You have something in general, you just want to address the Commission, this is the time to do it. You have something with regards to the public hearing, and you can wait till then, you're going to have an opportunity. So I open up the general comment session, and if you'll stand, state your name and the district you're from for the record.
I'm Brenda Martin, I'm in the Mountain Committee District. I'm the interim County Administrator here, and I ask Mr. Suttlefield opportunity to speak for just a moment. I'm at the beginning of tonight's meeting for two reasons. As you've read and or heard, David Damrin, who's been with us since June, submitted his resignation. He's moving on to greater pastures, as they say, and so I wanted to, the planning commission and to the folks who are here, and I'm sorry I'm on my back to you folks, express our appreciation to him for the service since he's been here to the community, and we wish him all the best, both personally and professionally, as he moves on. As you also know, Rappahanna County has a pretty small staff, so when we learned of Mr. Damrin's resignation, a couple of the Board members suggested to me that we go back and look at the applicant pool that the Board considered at the time that he was hired. So I did that. I contacted one of the top candidates, and I would like to introduce to you our new zoning administrator, who we were able to hire pretty quickly. Michelle Summers is. Michelle Summers is, has about 14 years of experience, I think, in Page County. She has served as a zoning administrator there. She has been sort of a one-man shop with the, excuse that, one-woman shop, even, I should not be saying that, should I? With the planning commission and the BZA, she has a zoning administrative certification. She has taken the planning commission training and the board's zoning appeals training, so she comes to us with a wealth of experience in a very small locality, some similarities in the amount of support staff she doesn't have here. So we welcome her to Rappahannock County, and she actually started today. This is kind of a miracle day for her, so we welcome, and then-
She'll be here tomorrow.
And good luck. I told David, he had to give her a phone number so she could put him on speed dial.
Well, we're looking forward to working with David, Commissioner Eckers, Mr. Golf.
Thank you very much.
So we appreciate all you gentlemen. Public comment session is still open. Anyone else? We're going to the general comment.
Tom John from Piedmont District. I have sat on this commission for about 12 years, was chairman for three years of the 12 years, was under Mike Massey, the girl from Woodville, and also Doc Cresser, and then myself. When we did the zoning ordinances, we took it out to the pub in every which way that you could. But anyway, regardless of that, I've been here for 33 years, I'm not understanding how 40 years you can have a meeting and advertise it properly, and then within the last two years, you can't advertise a meeting properly. I don't understand that. How it worked for 40 years, and then it didn't work for the rest. I'm just putting that out. But the planning commissions should, it's not to give, it's to make good neighbors. That's what the zoning ordinance is for. It meshes in with the comprehensive plan, because that's really what people want. They want, when they state it in the comprehensive plan, that's what the people wanted. The zoning ordinance meshes in with that. It doesn't allow one person, because you like them to do something, or because you don't like them to do something. It has to mesh in with the comprehensive plan. I don't, just, I just don't understand, when changing this ordinance in certain ways, I don't know how this all came about. If you read through that ordinance, it's a really, really good ordinance. I'm not saying some things doesn't need to change. The changes that you have in front of us now is very dramatic. And I would say, yes, the commissioners, just a point of reference, it's not any busy area. There were 7,000 people when I came in here 33 years ago, there's still about 7,000. There's no more work on the thing, there might be a little bit more work, but we're still getting the number of applicants we did, if you check out the records. So, you know, I don't understand why it gets so complicated, that something, you should follow the ordinance, period, you know, and I think this commission has got off in the last few years of not reading the ordinance, following it, and understanding. Anyway, thank you for that.
Ron Mackley-Jackson District, I'd like to back up what Tom just said. I mean, what, what we've just saw here just boggles my mind. I've done this throughout my history. When I lived in Crested Duke, Colorado, I was, a tiny little town, I was at the town meetings, we talked, whatever. I moved to Virginia Beach, and was there for 20 years, biggest city in the state for the most part, was before them. I've never seen these problems before. I mean, it's, it's just, it's just real weird, in that we can't even start a meeting without all of this discussion and whatever. I mean, we, why, why do we have all these problems? It, it does, it does make any sense. And to add to that, just as far as how we're doing business here, right now, you're all sitting up there at the table. If it was the board of supervisors, there would be speakers, there would be microphones, so that, you know, we could all hear, because it's the same room, and it's the same situation. But for you all, apparently you don't warrant having microphones. And as a county, I mean, we've got to get our act together here. I mean, this is just getting really ridiculous, in that, I mean, just like I said, this setting, just the fact that we can't get a meeting going, we can't approve an agenda, it does, it's, it's after 8 o'clock now, the meeting started at 7:30, and you just got into approving the agenda. We've got to do a better job. It's, I mean, it's just really frustrating for, I know it's frustrating for you, but it's frustrating for us out here. We come to these meetings, and we want to participate, and it's becoming harder and harder. And we've got to do a better job.
You want else?
I'm Heidi Dodd, I'm also with the Piedmont District, and I have a few comments on the proposed zoning amendments. First, I want to thank you for looking at the special use permitting process and trying to fix a process that currently functions more like a popularity contest than what it should be, an objective review of standards and qualifications based on the published county code. And regarding the acreage requirement issue, the comprehensive plan is very clear in its support of low-impact tourism, like tourist homes. The county has had tourist homes and B&Bs for years, and I have yet to hear of a tourist home that has caused a problem in this county. When I asked Sheriff Compton about this, she also could not recall her office receiving or responding to any complaints related to tourist homes. So I'm asking you, where exactly is the problem? Why is there a need to increase the acreage requirement for tourist homes from two acres as published in the county code to 10? Has there been a corresponding increase in problems or complaints associated with tourist homes on smaller lots? And if so, where exactly are all these problem tourist homes? The fact is, they don't exist. And because the BZA has been granting tourist home permits based on the two-acre minimum since 2010, the county now has six-plus years of case studies to prove just that. If the county is serious about porting tourism, it makes little economic sense to limit the number of properties eligible to become tourist homes. And it also seems very wrong to deny one group of property owners economic opportunities given to another group for no justifiable reason, particularly in light of this county's relatively high level of poverty and income inequality. So please look at this very closely. Thank you.
Chris Parrish, Spelman-Wall County District. First of all, thank you, David, for your work and all the meaning, hours that you put in with our golf on doing what we're doing, or something, it's quite, took a lot of concentration, appreciate that, and Michelle, welcome.
Thank you.
Have a lot of fun. I want to, you know, within publicly thank the planning commission for their work, it's a very knowledgeable board, and they're very thorough, and I know that, you know, they're under Austin Swiftney, and so therefore, we take extra time to make sure that their, you know, their procedure is correct, and so, you know, we have to sit through that so that they don't get called out at a later time for doing something out of order. But what I really want to say is that, bring up the fact that in neighboring counties, there's multiple applications for solar fields. And they don't have it in their comprehensive plan, either. We don't have it in our comprehensive plan, they don't either. I know they reached out to John Carthy in his capacity, he's the environmental council, and actually, he's forwarded to me what he's recommending Culpeper to put in their comprehensive plan, and I'll forward it to you guys. They're offering, these companies that are brokering these solar fields to sell electricity, they're offering the farmer a minimum of $800 an acre, which is more than the farmer could make with any crop. And a neighbor of mine who's in Culpeper County, he's been offered a whole lot more than that. So it's really tempting for farmers to just, you know, sign away. And so we could be looking at applications in the near future for 10, 20, even 30-acre fields of solar panels, which I'm not sure if we want that or not, I don't know, I'm just bringing it up that we need to address that. I would like to have something in place before we get our first application. So that should probably, being we're working on the comprehensive plan anyway, that should probably be something that we look into pretty quickly.
Chris Parrish. Paige Walling, Jackson District, good evening. I want to address the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. Last month, I commented on the need to perform the required analyses and studies for the comprehensive plan so as to understand why the county is not meeting its goals, principles, and policies for the plan. Let me bring to your attention the chart of permitted uses in section 170-36. I would like you to note the types and uses allowed in conservation and agricultural zones by special exemption or special permit, doesn't make any difference, if your goal use, if your goal is to encourage and preserve agriculture, why is it that there are more types of uses allowed in agriculture zones than any other zone? Why do we allow arenas, stadiums, correctional facilities, power plants, thank you, Chris, airports, drive-in theaters, and the list goes on in agricultural zones? Now, I would like, now I'd like to bring your attention to the definitions in 170-8. Many of these are in dire need of revision, such as tourist homes, the tourist home definition there isn't how tourist homes are being applied now, it's just that little place up in Sperryville, all right? Conference, convention centers, festivals, all those definitions are way out of date, more than a system needs to go with. By the way, why do we need arenas? Where is the navigation of water in the county?
In the water channel.
Forget about water channels, all right? Any developer or special interest group could drive a truck through the holes in our zoning ordinance. Note what has happened in Culpeper County. It is not the zoning ordinance that has saved Rappahannock, it's the economics. The economics just does not work for large-scale commercial projects. That is not the case for small-scale businesses such as tourist homes and event centers. The increasing controversy over these issues is because there are not established standards that have been vetted by the community. Yet before, yet before you this evening, is a major change of the zoning ordinance that does not address any of these issues, and will likely make the situation worse. The change before you this evening began at the board supervisors' meeting in August, with nothing more than a discussion of combining the special use and special exemption permits. Then in September, the board supervisors approved a resolution that also included removing authority restrictions and setting a minimum tourist home acreage with conflicts with, with changes already approved by the planning commission as you mentioned. I was going to ask, who directed those changes, but our county attorney answered it, Chris did, all right? When, when were these changes discussed in the public forum? Last month, the planning commission simply noted conflicts and called a public hearing on both sets of changes, without discussion on the topics. But here we are tonight with just the changes from the resolution. Had it that you just approved the amendments, it said that both of them were going to come off a public hearing, what happened? All right? I am retently concerned about eliminating 170-49, limits on authority. Combined with the extensive permitted uses in 170-36 that I talked about before of agricultural zones, the majority of the county, that provides a wide-open door for special interests that could easily destroy the very nature of our county that we cherish so highly. Such a drastic change in zoning ordinance should not occur before we, one, do the analysis and studies to understand the critical problems, and two, address the more glaring problems in the zoning ordinance. Discussion by the planning commission is warranted to work out the details, not a public hearing on these zoning issue changes, zoning ordinance changes that are being railroaded through without the appropriate due process. Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else? Might, before we, keep standing, I'm sorry, I just want to pass this along, we're going to try to keep this to three minutes, please, I'm doing a little flex, as we get into the public hearing, when I open that up, it'll be three minutes per, per comment, so we can move the meeting along.
My name is Joko Borski, living in Hampton District. When my husband and I moved three years ago, we started to attend county official meetings just to get to know a new county and officials. The zoning ordinance interested us in particular simply because properties on Quark Lane, that's a private road we live on, and the next street, also private lane, have been subject to what we definitely believe zoning violations. I know that the planning commission has been working very hard on the amendments to the current ordinance for over a year. Have you ever, the proposed amendments today presented for the public hearing do not contain the work you've been doing? And this document is just a different format of the board of supervisors' resolution passed down, now, September 6th meeting, I believe. Like my reflection, the board agreed to consolidate both amendments, the ones from the board of supervisors and the ones from the commissions, and they have one document for the public hearing. That's not what's presented tonight. The planning commission also voted in the last meeting, September 20th, to consolidate both packages of amendments. So where are the planning commission documents? It's not in the same package, and that was what you agreed on last time. So are these documents ready for the public hearing tonight? That's my question. There are also obvious typographical errors in the document, presented document, and it seems to have been done in haste and not well thought out or reviewed. I have a whole bunch of more list of amendments that I have.
You've got about 47.
Okay, so I beg you, members of the commission, please review these documents very quickly and carefully, within 60 days since the last meeting of the supervisors, because that's a time of loss, I believe. And please make one complete package for the public hearing. Thank you for your attention.
Anyone else?
Janne Northall from Jackson District. And I, first of all, thank you for your service. I know it's not an easy job, I do appreciate it. But my concern, and I guess the way I always look at things, is from a fairness point of view, and I would hope that when you make these changes, when you make a decision, that it's always based on what is fair. I've always wondered about how one thing's fair for a person who owns a certain amount of property, but not fair for someone who owns a different amount of property. Just doesn't seem fair. There are a lot of people in the community that I've grown up with in Rappahannock County that don't own 10 acres of property, but they have just as much right to lease their property as a tourist home or an Airbnb, as someone who has 10 or 20 or 25 acres. It's just a fairness thing, from my point of view. There haven't been problems, the sheriff has commented on that before, may perhaps the way to deal with this is make it a, I don't see creating problems where problems do not exist. So if, if there's a problem, then we address the problem and perhaps amend, amend the requirements. But set strict requirements for the, for the owners of these properties, whether it's a B&B, an Airbnb, or a tourist home, handle it that way. Acreage just doesn't seem to be a fair way to do it. Acreage just doesn't seem to be a fair way to do it. Just my two cents. Thank you very much.
So am I, do I understand correctly, there's going to be a summary hearing?
There's going to be today, yes.
And that'll be on, on the proposed ordinance changes?
It will.
That's following the, okay, great, thank you.
Sheriff, I'm back. I'm in the Gulf Island, Hampton District. First of all, say what I want to say. I'm going to a hearing and you guys should have microphones, just like, like the supervisors and, and the school board. And the second thing, that podium, you can't see half the people. So it seems to me somebody should position that podium so that those of us in the audience can see who was actually.
Yes, right back there, that's a good spot.
Presentation. I've lived here to 39 years, actually Monday, this last Monday was the 39th anniversary when I bought my house. And what I'm worried about is that I keep hearing people, you've got to do this the right way, you've got to do this legally, you've got to advertise it, you've got to do, and then when we finally have something that is legally advertised, done the right way, we come to a meeting and the first thing out of one of the member's mouth is, well, let's table everything. And if people don't come, that's just too bad. I mean, if they're not interested in coming and discussing this, I'm not going to worry about the fact that they weren't here. It doesn't seem to make sense to advertise something and then say when 30, 40, 50 people show up, oh, we're not going to do this. It's, it's just not, absolutely not right. And the last thing I have to say is when people say it ran perfectly for, so I've lived here a long time, believe me, it hasn't run perfectly for 38 years. There's been a lot of mistakes made and a lot of pushing under the table and a lot of walking away from things that perhaps we should not walk away from. And I don't know if this is the right time to comment on, on if we should do away with the, of a BZA and combine them, but it seems to me that the supervisors have enough to do without taking on something else. I, I can't quite figure out, we keep saying there's not enough time every time we come in, well, we didn't have time to do this, let's put you down the next month, and now all of a sudden, we're deciding that we should take on more, we should push more up to the supervisors. And, and, and that doesn't make sense. And what also happens all the time is, what I've seen it happen, and it kind of happened to me, is somebody will come before the BZA with a permit, and the BZA will change it or alter it or deny it. The zoning says that there should go to the courts. It's a judge who should decide, if I remember what the zoning ordinance said, it's a judge who should decide this. Instead, what they do is they change it to a special exception, and then it comes before you and it, and that's what's destroying the process. You guys are, you guys are, are, you know, things are passed on that, that, that should not be passed on to the board of supervisors. There's another way of, of changing this, which is written into the code, and, and, and nobody seems to pay any attention to it. Thank you.
You want?
Yeah, Mr. Conick. Gentlemen, I just want to, I guess I'm going to combine my comments because they're not that much, but I want to say that I, I think it's really unfortunate what happened tonight. I think some of what Hank said just said was exactly, but this commission, last month, voted as it said it was going to do in June to have a public hearing on what's now called the May amendments on July. They started in March of 2016. I think they're on six pages. Most of them, 90% of them, are to conform the ordinance with requirements of either state law requirements or building code requirements where what was in the ordinance was out of date. And only a very few of them have to do with real changes to the ordinance, such as this minimal lot size for tourist homes and bedded practices and what kind of roads they're on. The commission worked on those month after month, always getting, pushing it back to the end of the meeting, and finally, we got through them after, I think, 14 months from March of 2016 until May. Then it was summertime, people wanted to be away, and the commission voted to have the public hearing on them in September. Well, that didn't happen because I'm not sure why. So the next thing was your meeting last month, which unfortunately I couldn't be at, you voted clearly, there was a big discussion for 20 or 25 minutes. Mr. Henry made a motion to have a combined hearing. Mr. Light put a condition on it that the marked up version of the ordinance for all the supervisors amendments was going to be circulated. By the way, if you read the board of supervisors' own resolution that they passed in September, which is what you're supposedly acting on, it said right in there that the zoning administrator was directed, and the Commonwealth or the county attorneys were directed to get those to you from right then, way before your public hearing, and as I understand it, you didn't get them until very recently. So what I can't understand is how the commission proposes not only to discuss 100 and some odd pages, they may be very similar changes, in one night, and then go immediately to a public hearing or vice versa, or have a public hearing on something the commission just got that's a hun, over 100 pages of changes, when it took 14 months to go over six pages of very discreet changes. And when you talk about something that isn't a fair process, I would say that would be it. I think it's a big mistake to have a public hearing tonight without any assurance from the board of supervisors. I don't really agree with Mr. Goff's interpretation of the code that applies to this. If you open a public hearing on these amendments, the board of supervisors can pass them in its next meeting, they don't have to wait for your recommendation, and you can table it and discuss it from now until next June, but next month, if you open the public hearing, once you open it, you've had a public hearing and the board of supervisors can proceed. That's what's in the code. And Mr. Goff disagrees with that, he asked him to read it to you, it says right in there. The second thing he said that's absolutely inaccurate is that changes to the ordinance cannot originate with the planning commission. They can.
Did not say that.
You said they have to go to the board of supervisors and then come back. They do not. They can originate with a commission, that's what the state code says, and that's what our zoning ordinance says. If anyone would bring it and read it, you'd see that.
You still have to have a public hearing, Dave.
You do have to have a public hearing, but the board, the planning commission can originate its own public hearing.
They never said they, they never said they couldn't.
Well, okay, good, I'm glad we clarified that. Thank you, Art. So I think it's a mistake to do it. As far as what was on the table, because I've got to be somewhere, so I'm just going to give you my comments real quickly. On, on the proposal to take away the authority from the board of zoning appeals, I don't know really what is the origin of it. That is the way the state code lays it out. Yes, it gives the board of supervisors authority to reserve the authority to make these decisions, but that's the way we've done it in Rappahannock County ever since we first had a zoning ordinance in 1966. I don't know what suddenly happened that we now have to change it. I don't know what, what decisions the board of zoning appeals made that you don't like or that the board of supervisors doesn't like or the way we do it, but I want to point this out to you, and most, some of them are here. Mr. Byrne has been on the planning commission for two years, and he's been on the board of zoning appeals, help me out, six years or eight?
Not that long, but four years.
Six, okay. Mr. Sharp is here, he's been on the board of zoning appeals 25 years, and he served on the planning commission, help me out, how long was it? Okay, a couple of times. Ms. Matthews has been on the board almost 30 years. Ab served on the planning commission for a couple of times. Mr. Anderson has been on the board of zoning appeals for six or eight years, he served on the planning commission. So that, and I was zoning administrator, I don't have to go through my resume, you know it. So our combined experience in zoning on the board of zoning appeals is somewhere, according to my math, which is terrible, between about 50 and 75 years of experience of those five people. And the board now is trying to say that it's going to work out better to transfer this authority over to the board of supervisors that has Ron Fraser on it, he's the only person, and now Mr. Losinski's been on this board for several months. That's the only experience that the board of supervisors has in zoning, and the decisions they make, if you'll excuse me, show up, because they don't know what's in the ordinance. They haven't read the ordinance, they're not familiar with the ordinance, they have an administrator of the ordinance, and there's nobody on the board save Mr. Fraser that has more than a few months of experience. Mr. Fraser was on this for many, many years, I'm not sure, but, okay, well, I think it's a bad idea. I want to say about the elimination of section one, the proposed elimination of section 170-49 is going to open the door to any kind of changes. There's case law, the board of supervisors will not be bound by all the special conditions that are in the zoning ordinance that protect people in the county. So that's willy-nilly decisions, which is what we have seen in the board of supervisors. They don't make the findings, they don't go through the ordinance, they don't apply it. And that, elimination of that standard, of that requirement, is going to open the door to all kinds of trouble. Last but not least, there's a proposal hidden in here again, which was discussed by this commission and the board of supervisors and rejected, when Mr. McCarthy proposed it was a change in state law to allow the zoning administrator to grant administrative variances, and then, if somebody, neighbor, or something like that one happy with it, to appeal it to the board of zoning appeals instead of going right to the board of zoning appeals. That's a terrible thing to do, it's terrible to our new zoning administrator, because I've been one, David Dameron's been one, and the rest of them, I think, are all gone, but Dick McNear is gone, so I don't know who's left to tell you, but the zoning administrator has enough headaches in their office without being having the pressure of making those kind of decisions. And the other thing that's highly unfair about it is the neighbors. The neighbors now can come to the meeting, the proponent of the variance can say, state their case, and it can be voted up or down, and, and then that's the decision. But the way it's going to be if you change it, the, there can, the applicant can come to the zoning administrator, the neighbors get a notice, and for some reason, they're not happy with the outcome, they have to pay $500 for the filing fee and the appeal fee to bring it to the board of zoning appeals when they're just trying to mind their own business. It's the neighbor who wants the variance, let the neighbor pay the fee and put on the hearing, and if the board votes it up or down, then it's up to them to take it to a higher court. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Marion Bragg, and I'm in the Hampton District. I might just have a few quick comments. You say that you want to restrict commercial activities in the zoning districts in which the predominant activity is agricultural in nature, and then willing to reduce the acres limitation for tourist homes in that district? I want to have the opposite effect, and very much against this, this proposal. I just wanted to put that up.
Lynn Sullivan, Hampton District.
I'm very much in favor of this proposal. Mr. Goff, at, at the request of Mr. Conick, issued an opinion letter when he was, as a member of the BZA, about this, this particular ordinance. At the same time, within a week, Mr. Sharp asked for an opinion letter from Mr. Goff to find, to, to determine whether Mr. Conick was in conflict of interest. The opinion of Mr. Goff was that he was in conflict of interest because he was also representing Marion Bragg. I was given a copy of all these documents. The board of supervisors did not have a copy of the request by Mr. Sharp to, to Mr. Goff, this is all sort of hush-hush. That, this process, all in secret, prevented people from making a proper, an ability to make an application for a permit. People are spending money with lawyers and time to, to apply for a permit to give the county money. Tourism, there's 400,000 people that come through 211, and we get hardly any of that business. Why? Because we don't have any tourist homes. We have no places affordable for people to stay. And that's a shame, because that would be a considerable source of income for this county. But it's impossible for anybody to do any planning with regard to the use of their property with regard to a business, a tourist home, a tourist oriented business, when we have these kinds of one, one weekend opinion that, that there's improper advertising, and it should go back to, you know, to 10 acres. That's the, that's for the court to provide guidance to the board of supervisors, not an opinion letter from the county attorney. Let the court, circuit court decide or provide guidance, mutual guidance to the board of supervisors, and let the board of supervisors vote on that. And secondly, having a, a, a second opinion that it was in secret to find out whether Mr. Conick was in conflict of interest, which according to Mr. Goff, he was, I just think is, you know, it makes it almost impossible for anybody to apply for a permit and get a fair hearing, or even a hearing at all. Thank you.
I now close the public comment session and move on to the item on the agenda, which is the proposed zoning amendment, open a public hearing. Prior to doing that, I'd like to read, and come to the record, for the record, I should say, is the resolution of the board supervisors of Rappahannock County proposing amendments to the zoning chapter of the Rappahannock County Code. Board Supervisors of Rappahannock County, Virginia Pursuit to Virginia Code 15.2, 2286, Section 3 and 7, finding that in public necessity, convenience, general welfare purpose of promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the public through amendment of the zoning ordinance to eliminate the distinction between the special permits and special receptions in favor of a single process of applying for special exception and company, including a completed application of the zoning administrator, taking review and recommendations from the planning commission, and then final decision by the board supervisors. The board of zoning appeals will no longer be involved. And, secondly, the preservation of property values and marketability of real estate by tailoring specific uses to specific properties and restricting commercial activities in the zoning districts of Rappahannock County in which the dominant activity is agriculture in nature. And lastly, reaching the balance between agricultural activity and the promotion of tourism and residential uses whereas activities are compatible and for the aper, apercet reasons. Proposes to adopt amendments to Chapter 68 of the bio-solids, Chapter 151 taxation, Chapter 170 zoning specifically, the Rappahannock Code as follows, and we all have a copy of that. Before I turn it to public hearing or open up public hearing, I'd like to ask Mr. Dale, if he has anything to add, in reference to what I just read, or setting the stakes for the public hearing, help on this, Dave.
These are some chapters obviously written here, primarily Chapter 170, but the other chapters I'll mention, obviously, it does have that special use in it. I'd have to press some comments, if there's any questions, if you want to say.
I now open the public hearing for this particular amendment. You'll state your name, your district, or whatever. We'll handle that very closely, I've got a little bit of rule, or I was before the public comment session, certainly because I did not state the rules on the front of you, but I keep it for around three minutes. Your standing, your comments are included. Mr. Joe.
I'm Tom John Peavon District. I guess we'll just go through the six things that were advertised here. Bad idea to get rid of special use and not go through the BZA. I don't think that is the intent of the ordinance when it was first written, those added, that applies. Propose to eliminate the limits on authority. I think you're in trouble if you get rid of that one. Propose amendment to clarify the procedures, what I was pointing out before, I don't understand how 40 years you can advertise something, and then now you can't. I mean, if it says three days, why don't you make it five days? Any administrator should have that, make that distinction. I'm not sure what four exactly is. The first and number five is the proposed amendment of bedded practices. I think that should stay the same, it's been that two acres for years. Proposal amendment really gets me is a proposed amendment on number six. Amendments will delete the requirement of zoning permit for residential additions and remodeling projects that do not affect remodeling projects that do not affect change in use. Sperryville Village Commercial, for example, there are certain things that are allowed there. So if I, in my house, I want to build all over my lot, okay? I can build all over my lot, I don't have to go through that. However, if I'm going to have a bed and breakfast, you have to have a parking. Where am I going to park that? That was one thing. So if you change that, where it doesn't go through, you can build all over a lot and do anything you want, especially in Village Commercial. There's other restrictions here. But I think that's a bad thing to get, and you should not get rid of that. But I thank you very much. Pass my bedtime. Good luck.
Alex Sharp. Hi, Alex Sharp. I'm actually the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And one question I did have, with the strike through of all this SP, it just is struck through in Highland. Does that mean it's being replaced by heat S E?
Yeah, I think it says it somewhere in there. It said we were being replaced by S E. Anyplace there was a S P, it was substituted S E.
Okay, so struck, okay. The other thing I would just throw out since we're talking about the powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals and special use permits, which there are many right now. And a question that I would have is, is there any advantage to having a group hearing applications to our ordinance that that group is not accountable to the supervisors or trying to get away? And I think that is the one distinction of the Board of Zoning Appeals that may not have been thought about or talked about, is we're appointed by the Circuit Court Governor. And it's true, the supervisors do not have control over us in a sense, the same way they do over you because they appoint you. But I'm just wondering if in the processing of applications, if there is any advantage to having a group that is not political, but is more just thinking about how is the ordinance stated and how it's as compliant with the ordinance? And I think a lot of times I hear, and I spent time on the Planning Commission, and a lot of times what was talked about was, well, we shouldn't have this, or we should have less houses, or more density, or less density. But that's not necessarily what we have been doing. We've been saying, what is the ordinance said? Does this comply with the ordinance? And then typically, can we make any conditions that would render this application acceptable and eliminate some of the problems? So that's the way we've been looking at it. I don't know if the supervisors would look at it the same. I'm not saying they wouldn't. But I'm still to postulate that there might be some reason why you would want a group that is not accountable to the Board of Supervisors and is independent. That's my view. Thank you.
Mr. Kim? Could I ask Mr. Sharp one question?
Sure.
Sir, you've been on the Board of Zoning Appeals for how long?
1990.
Since 1990, how many of your decisions were appealed and questioned or struck by any court?
I think there have been a couple, not more than a couple.
Thank you.
May I go into some details?
Three minutes.
Small ones.
All of this is applicable to this application.
Yes. Section 151, 170, instead of just highlighting or changing just a little word, you can delete the entire section. Just that's for the special exceptions. The next, the next section, 151, 178, explains it all a bit. Okay, going to definitions, bed and breakfast, tourist homes, there is not a lot of distinction among those three. The new state code puts all three of them together and calls it short-term rentals. Or can we use the same word, just to correspond with the state regulations? And Airbnb is not listed or mentioned. I should, I believe that needs to be regulated. Also, the new regulation of registry, that's by the state code, also needs to be addressed in this short-term rental section. Going into more details, grade and the definitions, 170-8. Grade, again, I suggest that to use the word used in other authoritative books, like IRC International Residential Code defines grade as the finished ground level adjoining the building at all exterior walls. That's a very, it's a lot clearer than what it says on the definition there. What is used here, which is not highlighted in this document, is added a word, a preponderance, I believe. But that-
One minute.
Okay, this is what is misspelled. Wait till me, so what I have. I can just send this to you maybe in an email?
Send it to, Mr. Dameron will be here, but send it to the county administrator. We'll make sure we get that in my hands.
Okay, I will do that.
Perfect, thank you.
I was just going to clarify, because I think, my understanding is that the hearing tonight is on proposed changes to markup. That is the subject of the resolution. Certainly, we're interested in public input on other parts of the ordinance. Perhaps those should get into general public comment, and feel free to put in your written comments as we're working through this. They're always welcome. But all the other things in the, it's not the entire ordinance that's subject of the hearing tonight. I just wanted to make that clear.
Excellent point. Stay focused. You can use your time wisely.
Ron Mackler Jackson District. On the size, it shouldn't make a difference whether it's an acre, whether it's 10 acres. If, you know, it depends on what you're offering. We've all, we have all been, I think, in this room to bed and breakfast or, you know, think places other than motels or whatever, and never considered ourselves to be a problem. And it's not a problem here. There is no, I don't think there's any documented problems in B and Bs, tourist homes or whatever, as far as neighborhood disturbances or anything. And that has to be considered, but also, like I said, the size is irrelevant. I mean, you know, your house takes up a certain amount of square footage on the property, and that's pretty much the effect of what you're doing. You might have 10 acres around it, but most of the people that come there, they come in, they're inside, they may be on the porch, they're not wandering, you know, they're not out on the property shooting off fireworks or anything like that. So the size of the property is really not an issue. And it's more the, basically, the, you know, the size of the facility and how many people they can handle in that square footage, and if they have adequate parking, and even people driving in. I mean, you know, most of them are, it's a car or two or whatever, and that effect on right-ofways and whatever is really not a big issue, and there are not, no documented problems in regards to that.
You really, you really aren't acting as a team. Jane Mackler. But I also see the value of continuing to use the BZA the way we've been using it in terms of, it's almost a checks and balance kind of thing. They're studying the zoning laws, they're focusing on those kinds of things, and I think it's true that they're not an elected, they're not elected officials and they're not appointed by elected officials, and it's nice to have that extra body investigating, looking through things, giving things a second, a little more thorough thought than perhaps the supervisors who are already overloaded would have time to do anyway. So, thank you.
Lynn Sullivan. I've been talking to a lot of people about tourist homes in this county, and what I've heard is, we're not, we don't object to tourist homes as long as they're not in our neighborhood. And that's not what the ordinance says. And if people apply for a permit and they uphold the standard of the law, the job of the BZA is to issue that permit based on they're upholding the standard of the law. What people on the board think of tourist homes or tourism in general, what neighbors think of it, if it's pro or con, is irrelevant. The only thing that's important is the law. You know, we have to uphold, all we have is rule of law, and we have to uphold the ordinances that we have. And people saying, I don't mind tourist homes as long as they're not in my backyard, has nothing to do with the law. And I think that's a lot of noise. I think it's harmful. I mean, we need, we need places for people to stay that's affordable, would promote agribusiness, seriously promote agribusiness, that we have places to stay.
Thank you.
I wouldn't introduce this except that other people introduced it. I personally do not feel that the BZA has done a good job. You know, and I think that is one of the major problems here. I have seen permits come out of there that you don't even know who owns the building, you don't even know who owns the property, you don't even know what they intend to do, they don't have ground plans, they don't have economic studies, they don't have motor vehicle studies, and yet they're approved because either they know somebody or they are friends with people. And I know I'm going to get myself in trouble, but that is one of the big problems in this county. I have heard, we ought to give him this permit because he's a real nice young man for Rappahanna County. The fact that he's not covering the ordinance and he's not doing what he's supposed to do doesn't seem to make a difference. And I've seen fights over two acres of parking, and yet then we talk about taking 169 acres without batting an eye, pass it through, and say, hey, you can have 8,000 people there, or we could start with 400 people there. It's you guys here, and the zoning people in the zoning ordinance, and the Board of Supervisors, if you did the job, I believe, the way it should be done, then I don't think we'd have one-tenth the problems that we have. But I think at times we bend over backwards to circumvent the law to give somebody something that we want to give them because we happen to know them or we liked them. You know, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
Make this simple, try and do this in here as possible. I again it, all right? For one, for the primary reason is, the last Board of Supervisors meeting meant to 12:30. BZA meetings are generally an hour. I may stand up at 2:30 in the morning to the Board of Supervisors to get through their new workload. Thank you. Paige Williams Jackson District.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. State your name and your district, please.
Mary Kibble, Peavon.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Mary Kibble, Peavon. The ordinance wanted to set the 25th, and that is proposed to be strictly limited on authority. I think that's a bad idea to strike at. I realize that there's inherent limits of authority, however, I think that to keep it in there strengthens the ordinances. And I personally think that we need all to strengthen our ordinances that we can maintain because I personally don't like to see my tax dollars go for paying legal fees. I think it's a waste of our money, and so as long as we can keep it strong, I think we need to keep it strong. I vote to leave that limits of authority in there.
My name is Brandon Burrows. I just, I'm in the Jackson District. I thought I was confused before I got here, but I'm not confused now when I got here. First, I'd like to say God bless you. I wouldn't sit at that table for anyone in the world. From what I understand, if the BZA is affordable to the non-elected body, I mean, that makes sense, just because I work for the federal government, unfortunately, and if you have an independent group of people that's not affordable to elected officials, well, I think that makes sense. That's my opinion. You can pay for it. As far as tourist home thing, I don't really understand what difference it makes whether you have two acres or 100 acres. This ideal of roads, I'm a deputy sheriff of Warren County. Last time I checked, these are public roads and people can drive up and down all the time. They don't need your permission, so I don't see that it's going to make any difference one way or the other. So we need some more economic growth in this county, and if folks have property and they can rent it out and make some money, I don't really see what all the big deal on it is, but maybe I just don't know all the issues. I'm sure after this meeting, somebody will catch me outside and ask me, and so I'll yow my three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, you've already answered, I'm sorry.
Gary, thanks a lot. You're running a good meeting, actually, and I know there's a lot to get through, so I'll be brief. First of all, I just want to say I'm going to focus on 170-66K, which is K-4, which relates to minimum acreage for tourist homes. Some people have the impression that the minimum acreage is in question. In fact, the ordinance, thanks to our boss, very quickly written, well-conceived legal opinion. We all know the minimum acreage is 10 acres. There's a lot of talk in the room tonight about this being a tourist-oriented economy, that the more tourist homes, the better, and that there shouldn't be any minimum acreage requirement for tourist homes. My position, strong position on 170K, 170-66K-4, is that if anything, we should be headed the other direction, it should go from 10 to 20. If you look in 170-65E, Country Inns, Retreats and Lodges, minimum acreage 20. I think that's a valuable point of reference that hasn't been brought up previously. The reason I think it needs to go to 20, if not higher, is, I think, a fairly basic idea in zoning and in planning, and that's the need for a buffer. I get it that people want to buy investment properties, rent them out to tourists and make some money on their investments. But a property at five acres or two acres is dropped in my hole, or your hole, or someone else's, lacks that buffer. And what it does is it starts to undermine the rural character of these rural areas that we all bought into when we came to this county. I live back in Hurst Hollow. We've been here twice, talking about the DOD's application. Frankly, it's an issue of the property being too close to the road. It's on just over five acres. It's exactly the opposite of a property that has a buffer that prevents an adverse effect on acres. And with that in mind, I think we all need to think really long and hard before we have this slippery slope of reducing the minimum acreage from 10 to something less. I think it's set us in exactly the wrong direction. And this idea that there are no problems with tourist homes, and I hate being on the opposite side of Jan and Ron Maclellan, for God's sakes. I mean, I can't think of the people I respect more in this county than them. There might not be documented problems in our county with tourist homes, but we can all look at the newspaper and see that communities are really struggling with whether or not Airbnb type rentals are a good idea. I've said before to the BGA, there are small communities in Canada that I've rented out that are bereft of actual residents because properties have been bought up by absentee investors on the weak Canadian dollar, and you have small fishing villages in Nova Scotia, for example, that are all Airbnbs. We're not there yet, but as I've said before, this is a slippery slope. There's a false notion everyone keeps talking about that somehow if we open the county to- to lots and lots of tourist homes, we're bolstering the tourist-based economy. Well, first and foremost, what about the people who live here? We are invested in this place, and we all love tourists for the right reasons. They go to Sperryville, it's a village, lots of businesses going on, that commercial activity is concentrated there for a reason, it's in the comprehensive plans, in the zoning ordinance, commercial activity in the villages is what we want. If you start pockmarking relatively pure rural areas with these insertions of what amounts to be unattended hotels, we're slowly whittling away at the rural character of our county, and it really, in my opinion, is the wrong way to go. So, I would like for all of you to focus your efforts on thinking about how we can bolster commercial activity in our villages to diversify our economy a little bit and not literally give away the farm. Al Henry, in a great interview with the Rappahannock News, talked about how to give people in rural areas on small acreage a chance to make money and focus on agricultural activities. Small orchards, small farm-type markets, that makes sense in an agricultural area. What doesn't make sense is for us to just lift the lid off and let tourist homes go wherever investors want to buy a small house and rent it out to someone. In fact, I think right now we have three dozen tourist homes in this county, somewhere in that neighborhood. Total revenue, according to Sharon Dodson, total revenue, lodging, tax revenue into the county coffers, less than $10,000, less than $10,000. I think the DODs or people like them probably put more than that amount of money in their pockets into the lodging, to rent their properties as tourist homes. So who's winning in this? Not the neighbors on a property that lacks an acreage buffer, certainly not the county. You're getting $10,000 in the aggregate from all the tourist homes that currently exist. So if you increase it to 100 or 200, you whittle away at my quality of life, you gain very little revenue on your bottom line. And the only people who win are people who are buying properties for the sole purpose of making money on my rental to tourists. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Ferguson, Huntington District. I live on St. Louis Kia and the DODs. We have a little house, and as we're aging, we're trying to figure out how can we sustain in the county? Maybe we can do Airbnb to help pay our property taxes, also bring additional tourists into the area that are going to go to the stores in the county and bring more money in that way. It's not just the people that are going to be renting the property that are going to be making money, other businesses in the area are also going to benefit from that. And I don't know, I've heard like lots of issues about tourists being, you know, the roads and tourists being a danger. And my personal experience, because I do walk the roads a lot, the people that are more concerned about are the locals in terms of the throwing of trash, locals instead of terms of driving really quickly, because I find that when I do see tourists driving down the roads, because we are on the way to the National Park trailhead, so people come by all the time to hike, that's what we have there. And they usually drive really slowly and they ask me for directions, but the people that live there usually throw out a six-pack on the way home every night. I mean, we see that and we pick up the trash. So I don't think tourists are going to be really that detrimental to the area. And I just think that we have to think about people that live here. We're really trying to sustain ourselves in Rappahannock, and there's not a lot of viable jobs here for us to do, particularly if you don't have a, you know, high education, or if you don't want to drive off to Fairfax or Vienna. You want to stay local, you want to try to make a living here, you know, and live in it. And I think Airbnb is a wonderful way to do that. I personally would be on my property and I would be able to oversee whatever's going on, you know, and I just don't think that it's a problem. And I don't feel like I should have 20 acres or 25 acres to do that. We have a two-acre plot, why can't I do that there? Why should that be stopped?
Thank you.
Sir.
My name is Desmond Dodson, P. Monck District. I just want to make a couple of points. I would really encourage the panel here tonight to stand behind the courage of your convictions in planning and supporting tours of historic properties. We renovated a historic property that was long neglected, and it cost money to do that. And we find that there's an opportunity to have a tourist home, we would like to take that opportunity if it becomes available. We don't understand, based on every research that we've done, how acreage requirement affects that. There's a legitimate debate to be had about standards that should be had across the board for tourist homes, but that's not this debate that's being asked about tonight. In particular, I note that in the marked-up version of what was posted on the web, there was retention of what's been in the published code since 2010, the minimum acreage requirement of two or five acres. But in this resolution that was also posted, this refers to 170-66-K-4. This resolution changes that minimum requirement to 10 acres, which is different from what is in the published code. The Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals now has seven years of experience of approving houses, tourist houses, for two and five acres, and the Nova Scotia problem hasn't arisen here.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Parish, she's on the hall time. I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of the distinction between a bed and breakfast, traditional bed and breakfast, where the owner is in the house with the guests and serving them breakfasts the next day, compared to a tourist home where the owner is not present. And I want to point out that that's what Airbnb is, Airbnb for tourist homes, because those owners are not in the home. And it's obvious that if the owner is in the home with the guests, then there is automatically oversight on the behavior of the guests. So, when we're working through how we're going to handle things like requirements and minimum size, et cetera, there's a huge difference between a B&amp;B and a tourist home.
Can I just ask you something?
No.
George Sawnham, I agree with Mr. Parish's comments, Mr. Whitson's wholeheartedly. So as far as tourist homes, it's a high-intensity commercial use being blocked in an inappropriate, low-intensity district, at least in the case of ag or conservation. Lot size, yes, it's relevant in terms of buffer, but there needs to be many more limitations, if you want to call them performance standards, whatever, to bring this thing in. One I would champion is, it must be the applicant's primary residence before you can possibly be approved for tourist home. That will avoid having our rental market for people that want to actually live in this community being undermined in favor of some conceived notion that, A, that each county even needs this kind of commercial use, which I don't understand. This is a farming field. I'll leave that there, and I'll move on to the BZA issue, which is, first of all, under the current zoning ordinance, it's an improper delegation to the BZA. BZA does conditional uses, and the Board of Supervisors does special exceptions, while state law doesn't make a distinction. The definition of special exceptions includes special uses. State law does allow the board of the local governing body to delegate to the BZA special exceptions, so if it all has to go, or none of it, and the way it is now, it's split, then that violates the locals. Should anything go to the BZA in the way of special exceptions, i.e. special conditions, no. Why? Because the BZA is a quasi-judicial body. It's created to review decisions. In the case of zoning determinations, it's a place where an aggrieved party can get regress from a zoning determination. Number one. Number two, variances really should originate in the BZA. And what a variance is, it's a situation where the law just can't accommodate the facts. So, it's outside of a legislative decision, i.e. a hardship case. So, BZA should be handling variances and review on appeals of determinations. The Board of Supervisors is the legislative body. The Board of Supervisors adopts the zoning ordinance. That's the body in the best position to review exceptions to the zoning ordinance. That's a legislative administrative decision, whether or not to find that the applicant meets the spirit of zoning ordinance. BZA should not have any role in that whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Sawnham.
Hi, I just have a couple of comments. Unless our desire is to turn the county into the playground of the land and gentry, I can't think of a worse idea than Pierre Whitson's plan to increase the lot sizes to 20 acres. It's ridiculous. And then in terms of commercial activity, a tourist home, the use of that is nothing more than somebody else, a person renting your house and using it as a home. There's no buying and selling of goods going on there. You're using your home just as they would if they were to live there, rent it for 30 days, which is the state minimum, or if they were living there for a year in terms of traffic coming and going. And I'd like to point out, if you've been following any of the tourist home application processes, every single applicant is willing to agree to conditions to work with their neighbors. I have yet to see any neighbor come before the BZA or the Planning Commission and not be amenable to work with their neighbors in terms of a variety of things. I mean, the Cousses have limited the number of months that they will rent their tourist house out. So, a slippery slope, I think that that's completely wrong, and I think you have to be realistic here. Thanks.
Are you calling yet, Laura?
Yeah.
This is, I know I've had my turn, but this is totally sort of on the subject but off the subject.
I think we will stick to the rules here. There's another hand's already come up, so if someone wants to be heard, I'm sorry. We need to keep this under control here. Anyone else who has not spoken would like to speak with our opposed public hearing. Mr. Fraser, in the back, sir.
Chairman, I'm just going to find myself in a situation here where there's four members before me, and I'm afraid that any one of us speaking out of public manners might be violating the FOIA, so I'm not going to speak out about any public matters that I can help with. I'm not going to point out that talk here at Fairfax have coordinates very similar, however, special use permits are handled by the BZA and special exception are handled by the supervisor. So I'm not going to talk about that. And I'm not going to remind anybody that the supervisors have been talking for months about giving the Planning Commission more time to look at something as simple as a B&amp;B or a tourist home or a family apartment. And yet the board has not wanted to give the Planning Commission the same amount of time to look at this narrative painted that is based upon, I'm not going to go there. I'm not even going to mention in my report that tomorrow's newspaper will have the first ad for the November 6th Board of Supervisors, public hearing on this very same ordinance change. Hopefully, I will say the same about that. And I would caution y'all to not table this tonight, but to recess the public comment. Don't close the public comment, to recess it. Hopefully, I won't have to say anything about that either, because there's too many of us here that we should be speaking about.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We had talked earlier in the meeting about whether to close the public comment, or as Mr. Fraser used the term, recess it. The public comment tonight is nothing what I thought it was going to be, and I think it would be a good idea to recess it, the public comment, and the ability to reopen it at a later time. Mr. Henry, you can turn it on my public hearing.
The public hearing. And this is a public hearing?
This is a public hearing. The comment's been closed by Mr. Chairman earlier, so this is a public hearing. And if you want to recess the public hearing, that should, that's what you're asking.
Yes. I think you have the legal ability to do that.
You have the legal ability to do that. Mr. Conick raised a point, and that once the public hearing was held, it doesn't say concluded, the board could still act, but I don't think that would be their intention if they could have a public hearing too and recess it and still not act. So just because it's a public hearing, that's not like a bugaboo that forces you to do something, okay? It's just that you have to hear from the public. And Mr. Conick, he's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but you don't have to do it just because you have a public hearing. It's just the public hearing, the public has to be heard from. Now, you've got 100 days, I think, after you close it, otherwise then they become passive or something. Please, 100 days, but you can do that.
Will we report to Mr.?
The reason I say this is that we had advertised, the Board of Supervisors proposed changes here, and I participated, told it was going to be more extensive and in-depth about the effects of the BZA and the issues thereof, and the function and the population. And it seems like to me, this is almost like we're hearing an application on votes for a tourist home and get brown hollow again. And this is not, what we're proposing here is far more, I think, extensive than this one either, that we will talk about. But I don't think the length of time we spent here talking about it centered on this one change is enough to close this public hearing.
I, General, it seems to me that would be the right thing to do consistent with the spirit of what we discussed at the beginning, which is, we want to hear it from the public, but we don't necessarily want to stop here when it's already happened.
With regards to recessing the public hearing, it was a pleasure to mention. Any other comments regarding that? I think it makes sense. There's still a lot of discussion on the proposed changes.
Mr. Chairman, I think this was referenced, but just so the board committee is clear, under public hearings, 170-133 under E2, once you open a public hearing, failure of the commission to report to the Board of Supervisors within nine days after that first meeting of the commission following the day of the proposed amendment, as been referred to the commission, shall be deemed as approved by the commission. So, just so the board and the commission knows that the plot is to be drawn on this. And I'll just, I'm in consent with the feelings of Mr. Henry and of Mr. Light, but just to point out, Mr. Gore finds comment, we'll have the opportunity to come and speak about this, doesn't necessarily mean we'll come and speak about it. So we may put... So we may push this out to the next meeting, the next meeting after that, but there is no guarantee that there'll be more, there'll be more interest in this other than the people who are here tonight, but certainly won't afford that opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown in comments with regards to recessing versus closing.
I agree with Mr. Luthinski, Mr. Light, and Mr. Henry.
If you last, you are the newest member, and you've had a pretty busy night here.
I do agree that it needs a lot more work. So if the recessing is the right avenue, I definitely agree with that. We need these changes, and then we need to offer the public an opportunity to have input on those changes.
I would encourage that as well. It seems like we're on the consensus. I don't know if we need to hurdle this. Maybe we'll do that anyway, just so we, for the record, fall in favor of recessing versus closing the public hearings. Any other opposed? Public hearing is recessed and not closed. We'll have the ability at the next meeting to open that up. So in terms of commissioners, with what we have before us tonight, of the varsan further discussion regarding the application of the public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be advertising for the reference we referred to was in May, the next amendment, consideration next month.
That is the understanding. Is there any reason we should?
Mr. Chairman, I would kind of think it's best to get the entree on the table. Yeah, and I think what has to happen is that the board has to tell us to do the advertising. That's what we've done. We need a resolution that has what that called imagined language in it about good zoning practices and so forth and so on. Even though there's a planning commission that originated amendment, we still have to have a resolution from the board, okay? For that to talk to the public here.
What's going on?
For the ones that haven't been advertised yet. They got to tell us to do it.
Mr. President, we're going to close the session. I know you do, but we want to talk through this.
As for what we do, I think we're going to end up kind of going through these things conventionally in some manner and discussing various provisions. It seems to me that the only one that is really overlapping is the acreage one, that was the subject of so much discussion tonight, and I think that's been properly noticed. So I don't see any reason at this point not to proceed with trying to conclude closure on the set that's been put towards by the supervisor, plus the acreage issue, which has been touched on by the resolution, but as already noticed, is under consideration for both what's in resolution explicitly and what's in the other ordinances. So we have that one covered by virtue of what's been advertised. So I don't see any reason that we shouldn't, in the interest of trying to give some clarity to this, work through this set now that we've started it.
Before we start the next set?
Before we start the next set.
Any other comments on the proposal?
Could the next meeting be designed to discuss what Mr. Light had suggested, and then if there is time to further discussion, do that? It does seem to me that we are stretching out this process perhaps more than it needs to be.
And if we do not have the time to get to those next, how does that affect movies of the next meeting and advertising for the week?
Well, because we only have one day a week of the newspaper of record, must be going to spend a zillion dollars advertising in the Washington Post, we've got to view the timing right. It's a timing issue, not less than five and more than 21 days before the public hearing. Plus, I need to be told what we're doing by my boss, the Board of Supervisors, as to what are we, what are they asking the planning commission to consider? You know, so the wording, I have to do the descriptive summary of the advertising. So there's just practical problems involved in rushing, you know? And suppose for whatever reason, the paper doesn't publish, you know, gets dropped, or we're late, and we missed the deadline, because they got a deadline. So it just, it seems to me that... I think we have to deal with the cards that have been dealt to us, dealer, the Board of Supervisors, and they dealt the deck of cards that we're dealing with tonight to look at proposed zoning amendments since September 2017. And they're not going to deal us any more cards until they want to. And if we had two things, we could just recess the public hearing. So in November, if there's comment going to be generated by tonight, we're going to reopen that public hearing on that night, advertise the May amendments, then we're going to have a public hearing on that. And I think the public could well be confused about which thing they would have to talk about. So I would like to have the May, we got it in September, so we might as well finish this, and then seems like a logical thing is to have the May probably December or January 2017. And also, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Henry's point, some of these changes proposed here is made, and we also have to deal with whether something is considered by the BCA or the board as it relates to SU and SE, and if that's figured out in advance, that that'll just streamline this or make this.
Good point.
If that decision is made as it relates to whether the language should be considered in the May.
I would just note that Mr. Luthinski's point earlier also, that there's now a clock
ticking on these, suggests that we wouldn't want to get stuck hitting the time clock because we brought more into the consideration, right? We want to...
Look, I won't be so bold as to state as to light that no matter what we do tonight or what we end up doing, the supervisors are going to do what they want to do anyway. We'll put the time in, and maybe it's a good result, but I think the BOS is going to do what they want to do anyway with this, unless they have to take light too.
Well, that's the oddity of the political situation of the year. No comment?
We appreciate your recommendation of the planning commission.
I would hope so.
As does Donald Trump of his advisors.
So getting back to crack here, we're supposed to reiterate that we want to handle this portion of the amendments and then we'll address the May amendments at a later time. I'm here. All in favor of passing credit on the provision of the amendments associated with that resolution? Only at the next meeting, I'd say a aye. Any opposed to that? So it's on the record. We'll have this at the next meeting. I, of course, we're at 9:35 tonight, but we're probably, I'd like to open up for some discussion, so we can kind of set the tone moving forward into the next meeting, and maybe work that needs to be done or questions between now and the next meeting that we may have, and on our hand, we'll be prepared to answer questions from our constituents. So I'll turn to the commissioners on the regards to this resolution. Mr. Burr, I'm looking at you because you have a perspective, you have gone to BCA, you have a unique perspective.
In terms of basically, it seemed like doing away with the BCA is a very questionable idea to me, mostly because it further complicates the supervisors and their job. Oftentimes, we have BCA meetings that last two or three hours, and to put that on top of the regular supervisors' meetings seems to be rather considerable complication for the public and for the supervisors. And as far, my way of looking at it is that if, if ink broke, don't fix it. If there is something that particularly needs fixing about the BCA, that would be a reason to pretty much move its powers to the supervisors. If it isn't, it seems a questionable enterprise.
With regards to the acreage?
With regards to the acreage, I don't feel that the acreage involves, as Mr. Light so well put it, this is a solution looking for a problem. And what I see here is basically a non-problem that involves denying the rights of ownership to people who have small acreage. And it would seem to me that all of the articulated problems are imputed, meaning they are thought or predicted for the future, and they are not actual problems that have been indicated by the experience that we have had up to now. So I don't see a reason to change the acreage requirements, and it could be looked on as a taking of the rights of ownership from people with smaller pieces of property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, I'm going to walk my way up the table. Mr. Brown, do you have...
Well, since Mr. Burr opened up the conversation that I thought we were going to have next month with respect to, you know, BCA, I kind of appreciate Mr. Son's observations on this. I don't know if I could have articulated it any better. As I've learned from sitting on the board with my counterpart, Mr. Fraser, sometimes doing the thing as required by law is not necessarily easy or comfortable, but it's the right thing to do. And I believe one of our members here, Ms. Mead, went and did some research for the committee to see how other counties in the Commonwealth are looking at this. And I believe what we got back was, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but about three quarters of the counties in the Commonwealth are moving toward this, just the one special permit considered by the Board of Supervisors. So I'm still of that opinion. As far as additional workload on the Board of Supervisors, we probably take more of a beating for not doing enough work than we do for having too much. And I'm sure there are things that our board can do to streamline the way that it works, so that wouldn't necessarily be an effect that we have heard on our beat. So I don't think that reason is the right reason to say we should keep it the way it is. We should really look at best practices and examples of what's happened in other communities. And in fact, as Ms. Mead has pointed out, I apologize for stealing her thunder, I believe I'm here, it's also looking at the same, and they keep getting cited as example why we do things the way we do. So, and with respect to the tourist home matter, I do, you know, I'm not going to belabor all the points again, but I fall on the side of the arguments that Mr. Burr has given. I feel like this issue has become white-hot because of one particular application, and we heard that application referenced over and over. But it shouldn't be, that decision shouldn't be made just because of one particular instance. I think each one of these cases is unique in itself, and I'm not so sure that acreage is necessarily the thing that should command the decision. But I'm going to remain, I'm going to open to further public comment on that.
Well, since we're in kind of first bite at the apple mode, I'll try to keep my comments generally at high level. In nature, in no particular order, I agree with those who said it would be a bad idea to strike the section on limiting authority, regardless of whose authority it is. I think we should be focused on matters of interpreting the ordinance, not kind of rewriting it on a case-by-case basis each time in that application. With respect to Hyden, we hadn't talked about it all tonight. There's also a proposal in this change that would have us not initiate a hearing until we voted to initiate a hearing, which by my interpretation would mean every application, even the most simple one, we require two P C, planning commission needs, which I think is unnecessary, and I don't support that change. I was surprised to even see it in here. I'd like to quickly remove it. I think it's fine to add the requirement, part of it is that the zoning administrator make a determination that the application is complete. That's great, but to make every tourist home or permit require two meetings of the Planning Commission seems like an unnecessary burden to the public and unnecessary bureaucracy. On the question of the acreage, you know, my views on this, I think, are pretty clear. I don't support lowering the standards, and I guess I'll take this opportunity, because I've heard a lot of these comments about, you know, the county only brings in so much food and lodging tax, and yet we should concentrate activity in villages. Well, there's not going to be economic activity in the villages if there's no place for people to stay in the villages. It's only going to be daytime and drive-through activity. So, you know, to think that the only impact of tourist homes or B and Bs is the food and lodging tax that they bring in is misinformed. Similarly, from a tax base perspective, when people make these improvements and it increases the tax base, when people buy a house to do something, you know, it increases the property tax base. When people refurbish rather than let be abandoned these old houses, it maintains the tax base. And, you know, every example that comes up that's a problem has to do with, you know, new people coming in here as investment properties. Well, what about all the people who are already here who have come in and asked for tourist home applications? This is not an issue of new people coming in versus the people who are here, and I think the fact that it's trying to be made into that is an indication of what the real issue is, and it's not one of zoning. And with respect to the question of the BCA versus Board of Supervisors, you know, these are political decisions. I mean, the ordinance is not that clear. It says things like, you know, will this change the character of the community? Well, is this a significant impact? You know, the reason that these are exceptions is that they're not clearly able to be articulated by a set of facts that any reasonable person would necessarily reach the same conclusion on. It's a political legislative decision that is, you know, by the Board of Supervisors and... and if there's an accumulation of bad decisions, they can get voted out. If the BZA starts getting into those political decisions, there's no way to vote them out. So, it's not a question of the BZA taking on or the, you know, keeping politics out of these decisions. It's the fact that these are inherently, in a way, political valued decisions that should be improved with board supervisors. Now, logistically, I think they're going to regret it. I think there are problems with how this would be, but if they want to take this on, I think that it's a matter of policy, and, you know, it's not necessarily a bad one. That's enough.
Mr. Chairman, I think we all agree that action on this tonight would be premature. I don't think the draft is comprehensive. I don't think it's ready for action. I've given a page of comments to my fellow commissioners and to the zoning office. There are sections that were not in the resolution that reference special permits that need to be struck through. There are sections in the legal ad that we haven't seen marked up. I think this is trying to put a Band-Aid on a problem. I think it would be worth evaluating instead of the wholesale change of special permits to special exceptions, perhaps some of these maybe could be administrative permits. With regard to special permits not going to the board of zoning appeals, I do think the board of zoning appeals has value for many of the reasons we've heard tonight. However, if the board has asked that, I guess it's be careful what you ask for, because I do think it would add, you know, definitely add to their workload. With regard to acreage, I do think size is important, the size of a lot is important. However, I think just as important are having standards, real standards that you can enforce. Section, removing section 170-49 would be a disaster, and my other...
Your thoughts, Senator?
Yes. And my other comment, again, I shared, and I'll go to the zoning office.
Thank you, Ms. King. Hold up. Just look at this from a broad standpoint, to start off with the question of acreage department. I think the county collects about $22 million in revenue each year that goes into their budget towards a $33 million budget, and then back down to about $1 million, comes from the state, to the bed, wherever. And that real estate tax comes from our portfolio of real estate, and we have a new manager of our portfolio here tonight, so some personnel. It's a portfolio no different than what an individual would have an investment in. And to collect $22 million, we have apparently a tax floor pool of real estate of $300 million. And then within that $300 million, there's a lot of ag property that's in there. If you look at the fair market value, it could well be $500 to $1 billion of real estate that we have in this county. And this tax base of this county of $22 million comes off of this investment that had been assessed as the market value of our property in the county. Now, the comprehensive plan kind of helps create this value here in that it says what people can do or can expect. And one of the principal things that people can expect is a quiet enjoyment of their property, and that's one reason why they come out here and pay the money that they do for their property. Now, last month, the board of supervisors sat their hearing, it went well into the morning, 1:30 in the morning, and where they listened to a landowner that wanted to have four events per year on their farm of about 200 people per event on this large piece of land. And they were going to have a one-day wedding, one-day reunion, one-day events on this property. And that was going to be it, and it was a very laborious event for the board of supervisors, particularly Mr. Welch, who did a wonderful job that night. And he was put in the middle of this hearing, friends of both sides, and it was very laborious. And it turned out to be a very tough decision, and a lot of it was politics by, not so much the board, but being pulled by the people there on each side. And I think that doing away with as many reviews that we have by the BZA will create more situations like this, where the board of supervisors are going to be put in a very, very difficult situation, dragged along the lines, and, you know, threats of next election will be played at them, whereas the BZA, being appointed by the judge, are pretty much absent of this political, local influence that maybe helps to get to a right logical decision. Now, what's interesting in that decision there is so difficult to approve for uses for that very large property per year, one-day uses, but yet here we are talking about changing the ordinance to tourist homes to basically say, you know, in an ag or conservation area, any size lot is good, so to have a tourist home. And you can have a different group of people in there every night, whether it's half an acre, one acre, or five acres, whereas somebody with a very large piece of property cannot have four events there per year without a one-year review and all these standards. And I think it takes away, too, from the character of the particular neighborhoods that surround these people that want to have tourist homes. I think Rappahannock is very unique and a very unique character with a diversity of properties, of terrain, of geography, of views, of watersheds, and everything that makes this county unique has gone together and formed this great base of property things. And to say anything that anybody wants to do with a rental is okay, it goes against the comprehensive plan, and the fact that it only generates $10,000 of income to the county has to be noted, because it's really not worth the damage to our portfolio of $500 million to $1 billion in property. It's not worth the damage there. And another thing that's bothering me, we're a planning commission, and if you recall over the last couple of years, we've had people that come in and tested us and said, well, you know, I'm thinking about buying these five lots and buying this house, and we want to build five other houses, and we want to rent them all and basically do a motel on four or five lots out here in the countryside that we want you to say is okay and it's legal. And, you know, it's one thing maybe for an owner that's there all the time to do a tourist home, but when you've got absentee owners coming in and buying these properties that are high some issues of residential properties and using our ordinance to create these motels and ag and conservation areas, it goes against the intent of our ordinance, and it goes against the comprehensive plan. So, I'm against changing the acreage. I think it gives integrity to our ag property, to our conservation property, to our comprehensive plan, if we maintain the 10 and 20-acre rule. Now, in terms, one more thing on the BZA, you know, the BZA does have a tremendous amount of experience on the BZA, and I think probably one of the reasons we're talking about this is probably has been a problem, maybe one member there, that has created turmoil and discussion and problems with the county. But I guess this one member's bad average is starting to get a whole lot better, and maybe, you know, he's probably bad by maybe 500, so I guess if he's bad 500, he probably would stay in any league at least, if that not good. So, I guess we have assets that we need to draw on and try to work with these issues that we have with the people and with our zoning, and try to bring together a more comprehensive accounting here. And I guess, too, being realistic, that part of this issue that we're talking about site size maybe goes back to the problem in 1990 when there was apparently a publication of a site for site size changes that was not actually advertised correctly, and we got a couple of properties around that limbo. So, I know we got a legal problem, but ignoring the legal problem, I think from our plans and what we need to have some credible acreage sizes to maintain the integrity of our ag and conservation areas.
I will tell you, I ask the specific questions on the front end because it kind of sets the stage of, creates a lot of, creates some issues for folks who grew up here who may not have by a couple of acres and really try to jump. I'm sympathetic to that, and on the other hand, I'm sympathetic here. I like where I'm at. I don't have, I've got a really nice buffer around my house, and one thing I don't have, I hear some traffic on 211. That's okay. So, I understand what I want to give that up, and someone who's lived here appreciates it more than I'm a little older, trayer, where I didn't think about that too much. So, I am very much on a kind of noble road, as we need to hear more, and good discussion. Sorry to bring that up, Mr. Luthinski, Tom May, the BZA contributor, I think we discussed that, but I can't promise that did that to some extent. Maybe that will help with opening back up the public hearing at the next meeting and being more focused instead of some of the material that we're in my progress and really it's not germane to this. Having said that, we're at 10 o'clock. If it's the pleasure of the commission, we should continue this to the next month, we can have a hearing to reassess. If that's a little bizarre, a motion, Mr. Henry has made a motion to continue this application. We have not, but reference to this particular item under due business, particularly in the next meeting, are we all in favor of that? I'll say a aye. Opposed? Thank you all for your presence.